I'll blind you.
I call to order the meeting of the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, May 21st, 2019, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas at 5:35 PM. Board members present are Mr. Marshall Kendrick, Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Fred Roberts, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mrs. Vicki Morgan, and myself, Marisol Quijano. Board members absent are Mrs. Nelda Sullivan. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that a notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Codes, Chapters 551. The invocation will be given by Mr. Roberts and the pledges by Mr. Bailey.
If you'd stand up, bow your head, take your hat off, I'd appreciate it. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for another wonderful day, thank you for your forgiveness, thank you for a great school district that has kids in mind and always cognizant of your presence. Now, give wisdom and direction to these fellow board members, the administrative staff here in the school district. We're trying to get this school year closed and everything is positive and we'd like to keep it that way till about June 15th. In the meantime, take care of us, take care of the school, take care of the kids. And we ask this all in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Do you see the place of American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We will now go into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074. For the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee concerning matters related to the superintendent's recommendations to hire administrative personnel, considering matters related to the superintendent's recommendations related to renewals, nonrenewals, and terminations of contracts for professional personnel, consider approval of amendment to superintendent's contract and related actions. 551.071, to consult with district attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district under the code of professional responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act. When the district seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer, consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. And we will reconvene at 7 o'clock. Thank you. We now reconvene in open session at 7:02. And we begin with special recognitions.
Well, board members, it's that time of year where we have lots to celebrate, so we have to keep this consolidated, or we could have been here all night. So, we're going to start with none other than Robert Kelly, our aquatics facility manager and head of aquatics coaching at Pasadena Memorial and Sam Rayburn High Schools, and Darla Kelly, his wonderful wife, who's head swimming and diving coach at Pasadena High School. And then they're going to introduce some amazing students, our academic all-state students and their achievements. So, I'll turn it over to them.
Good evening. We have eight students that were named this year to the three different academic all-state swimming and diving teams by the Texas Centers Classic Swimming Coaches Association, the Texas High School Coaches Association, and the Texas Girls Coaches Association. I would like to introduce them at this time. First off, from Pasadena Memorial, Kimberly Dutton.
Kimberly.
Next, from Sam Rayburn High School, Michael Vargas. From Pasadena High School, Justin Garcia. This young man was named to two different academic all-state teams, both from the TISC, Texas Centers Classic Swimming Coaches Association, and the Texas High School Coaches Association from Pasadena High School, Thomas Gonzalez. And we have two young ladies that are not here tonight, I do want to mention them, Abigail Lescano and Daniela Fraga. They are at an orchestra performance at Pasadena Memorial High School, and they're trying to get here, but we're going to move on, because I know we have a lot to that. Our final is, she's a senior at Pasadena Memorial High School, she has been named to three different academic all-state teams, the first time that has ever happened. As far as we've checked the records in Pasadena ISD, she was honored by the Texas Centers Classic Swimming Coaches Association, the Texas High School Coaches Association, and the Texas Girls Coaches Association. And she was an academic all-state last year, so she's a four-time honoree from Pasadena Memorial High School, Christine Osborne. Now, these students were honored for their academic standards for the high school years and for their athletic success during this current season. All these students have maintained a 3.75 GPA based on a 4.5 standard and completed in the playoffs of the UAL Region 6-6A Championships this past February. I give you your academic all-state swimmers and divers. Darla, would you like to say anything?
Thank you all.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Can we get the parents of these fine students to stand up so we can recognize? We know you drove them to practice and helped them with their academics, so yay for our parents.
Thank you, Dr. Powell.
Thank you all. Thank you for your amazing work, year after year. Next, I'm going to introduce no stranger to us, Linda Fletcher, our Director of Fine Arts, who will introduce the Pasadena Memorial High School Indoor Drum Line State Champions, let me emphasize that, and their director.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Powell. I do want to recognize the Pasadena Indoor Drum Line is under the direction of Assistant Band Director Mark Walden, and they could not have accomplished all of this without him, so I want him to please be recognized. They competed in the Texas Color Guard Circuit State Championship last month at Reed Arena in the campus at Texas A&amp;M University. With over 60 drum lines in competition that day, the Memorial Indoor Drum Line placed first, earning the gold medal and their second consecutive world-class state championship in a row, and that is the highest you can receive in the indoor drum line, so I'm very proud of them. World-class, as I said, is the highest, and they are nationally recognized. The drum line has been competing in this Texas Color Guard Circuit every year since Mr. Walden's arrival on campus in 2008. They began competing in the lowest classification, which is AA, during their first year, under his direction, have risen through the ranks, because you have to go through all the ranks before you get to world, where they have been competing for the last five years. The Pasadena Memorial Indoor Drum Line is the only drum line to medal in their class every year that they have competed, placing third twice, second four times, and champions five times. Please give them another round of applause. These students have given up many, 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 many hours, weekends, Saturdays, vacations, everything, I know, believe me, and so has the director and the parents. As I would like to announce, Mr. Abel Alfaro is the first student, Jolene Alvarez, Flika Artega, Melanie Baldaris, George Bravo, Jacqueline Chopper, Gavin Erkskins, Isaac Freya, Ezekiel Fuentes, Ruben Gander, Gabriel Garza, Isaiah Garza, Nora Gorgi, sorry, Alexander Gonzalez, Andres Guzman, Tyler Hines, Jonathan Herrera, Nathan Lucario, Viviana Martinez, Carolyn Martino, Josue Menes, Alexis Morales, Fernando Mota, Aiden Nino, Sebastian Nino, Jesus Paternia, oh, Paternia, Benjamin Phelps, Rene Ramirez, Arturo Reyes, Sean Robbins, Melanie Rodriguez, Mr. Walden, thank you. If you haven't seen their performance, you can find it on YouTube, it is an amazing performance. They are a talented group of people, and I am very proud of them, and I want to, parents, I know you are too, so would you please stand up so we can acknowledge you and all the hours you've given. Parents and family. Thank you, guys. If you'll go out the door so we can take your picture. Thank you, board.
Congratulations. Good job, y'all. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. That is nearly it.
If you haven't seen that group perform, it is something else, amazing.
Unbelievable.
Well, we're going to stay on this roll of successes, so I'm going to invite Elise Neff, our Coordinator of School Health Specialists, to come up and discuss the initiative that she has to share with you tonight.
Sure, thank you. So, good evening, board members and Dr. Powell, thank you for allowing us to be here this evening to recognize students who participated in a very important initiative. As you know, vaping has become an epidemic across the nation that has significantly impacted our youth. It is a growing concern in PISD. While advertisers want us to believe it is harmless, the message cannot be further from the truth. To spread the message to our PISD community on the dangers of vaping, our students in health science and audio/video pathways collaborated with MD Anderson to create public service announcements. This was truly a coordinated school health effort. Thirty-two different PSAs were submitted last month and judged by a panel made up of district personnel and representatives from MD Anderson and Houston Methodist. The top five were then posted on our district's Facebook page to allow the community to vote on their favorite. At this time, Tonya Hager, Executive Director of Career and Technology Education, will recognize the creators of the winning PSAs.
Thank you so much. Good evening, board members and Dr. Powell, and thank you again for allowing us to recognize these students for both their creative efforts and their concern for public health. The first group I would like to recognize won the Judges' Choice Award for the Best Public Service Announcement titled, "Lower the Rate, Don't Vape." These three students are in the AV pathway at Dr. Kirk Lewis Career and Technical High School. They are Alexa Leal, Brittany Salazar, and Victoria could make it tonight. Their teacher is Ms. Andrea Nguyen. If you would please turn your attention to the screen, they would love to share their PSA with you.
Vaping is not secret until each second. If you wait, you're four times more likely to discover the secrets, and that's just the fact.
Let's give them a round of applause. The next group we'd like to introduce actually won in two different categories. First, they won the People's Choice Award for Best Public Service Announcement. This group also won for Best Slogan, which was vaping, it's not a game. This group is comprised of students from both AV and health science pathways at Pasadena Memorial High School. The creators are Brianna Castillo, Andrea Davila, Fabian de la Cerda, Dulce Garcia, Kayla Munoz, Lizeth Nava, Valeria Rimaldo, and Hannah Weiser. Their teachers are Ms. Jennifer Baldwin and Dr. Christina Garcia. And again, if you would please turn your attention to the screen, we would like to share their PSA with you.
Needs to be turned up.
Turn up the sound.
Can we turn up the volume?
You can taste nicotine.
That's what kids nowadays are so addicted to.
What am I, it's better than cigarettes?
No, it's not. It damages the lungs.
Well, it's not as sweet and juicy flavor.
That's why it's extremely dangerous.
Something sounds so good, it would be painful.
You can taste nicotine.
That's what kids nowadays are so addicted to.
So, what do you tell me? I have nicotine, but I didn't have a cigarette?
Let's give them a hand. If the parents of any of these students are in the room, would you please stand to be Congratulations, students, teachers, and thank you for shedding light on the dangers associated with vaping. And board members and Dr. Powell, thank you for giving us a few minutes to recognize these students.
Well, don't run off, Ms. Hager, because you're up again as the Executive Director of Career and Technical Education. You have a lot of great recipients that need to be recognized tonight, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Powell. And yes, we are excited about all the good work that's taking place in career and technical education. It is an honor to be here to recognize our students and their advisors who have excelled and represented their schools in a number of national and international career and technical education competitions. This year, we had a total of 81 students advance to this level of competition, many of whom are with us here tonight. I'd like to start with Decca. These are our future marketing professionals, and these students actually traveled to Orlando, Florida in April from Pasadena Memorial High School. We have Joshua Guardado, sorry, Josh. He competed in automotive services marketing, and his advisor is Mr. Tim Boyd. From South Houston High School, we have Fabiola Trevino, Ashley Villarreal, and Rachel Zapata. This was a team who competed in financial literacy. Their advisors are Ms. Diana Pretorati and Geraldine Molina. From Sam Rayburn High School, we have Emmanuel Escobar, who competed in professional selling. His advisor is Mr. Charles Canalas. The next group competed in Skills USA, and these students will actually be traveling to Louisville, Kentucky at the end of June. From the Lewis Career and Technical High School, we have Jesus Carlos, who will be competing in carpentry. His advisor is Mr. Lupi Garza. And we have Alfredo Rodriguez, who will be competing in automotive collision repair. His advisor is Mr. Ivan Sevilla. The next two students actually went to Long Beach in March to compete in the National Craft Championship, which is a welding competition. From the Lewis Career and Technical High School, we have Javier Armenta and Alvaro Torres. Their advisor is Mr. David Gutierrez. This next group is our First World Robotics Championship Team. They are comprised of students from four different high schools, and they competed right here in Houston at George R. Brown Convention Center in April. From the Lewis Career and Technical High School, we have Itzel Ayala, Jessica Garfias, David Gomez, Kias Gordon, Kenny Lee, Colby Marbury, Freddie Molina, Adon Moreno, Juan Munoz, Kimberly Salas, Brittany Salazar, Ashley Sanchez, Megan Scarsella. Their advisors are Mr. David Scarsella, Ms. Kada Lamas, Mr. Philip Foster, Ms. Beth Peterson, Mr. Kyle Jurick, and Mr. Kevin Heron. From Dobie High School, we have Sophia Coleman Norris, sorry, Sophia. And from Pasadena Memorial with us tonight, we have Christine Osborne and Ryan Sugart. Will the advisors who are present, please stand and be recognized, they're walking up to the front. Good job, guys, thank you. Do we have parents of these students who would stand to be recognized? Thank you, parents. Students, congratulations again. If you would please make your way to the lobby, we'd like to get some pictures of you, and we're going to proceed with the next group of national qualifiers. The next group I'd like to recognize are our HOSA students, and these are our future health professionals. We had four high schools and one intermediate campus have students advance to international competition, which will be held in Orlando, Florida this June. From the Lewis Career and Technical High School, we have Brian Rios de Leon. His event is medical assisting, and his advisors are Ms. Desiree Gomez and Ms. Melinda Medina. From Pasadena Memorial High School, we have Essencia Garza, who will be competing in Healthcare Issues Exam. Her advisor is Dr. April Barker. From Sam Rayburn High School, we have Maria Guzman, who will be competing in Healthy Lifestyle. And we have a team comprised of Serena Hernandez, Haley Roberts, and Jackie Morales, who will be competing in Health Education. Their advisors are Dr. Michelle Baker and Dr. Orlando Oliver. And from Parkview Intermediate, we'd like to recognize Landon Galvan for Nutrition Testing, Clarissa Ponse, and Mia Gallardo in Health Education. And their advisor is Ms. Diana Stinson Reese. The last group I'd like to recognize this evening is from Pasadena Memorial High School. These 24 students actually advanced to national competition in 2D and 3D archery. They traveled to Salt Lake City, Utah at the end of April. From Pasadena Memorial, I would like to recognize Damian Torres Burgos, Douglas Carringer, Andrew Casey, Samantha Drennan, Terracita Flores, Kyle Garza, Adrian Gonzalez, Daniel Gonzalez, Jose Jaimez, Brienne Jenkins, Denali Jimenez, Tiffany Messina, Robert Mos, Angela Mooney, Kylie Mullins, Daisy Olvera, Grace Oriana, Daniel Perez, Caterina Puente, Matthew Smith, Avery Speaks, Naya Tanu, and Melanie Venancio. Their advisors are Mr. Lloyd Love and Mr. Sunny Mills. I hear a lot of parents out there, if you are a parent of one of these students, will you please stand to be recognized? I would also like to thank all you principals for your commitment and continued support of career and technical education. I would like to recognize you at this time, from Dobie High School, Mr. Franklin Moses, from Lewis Career and Technical High School, Steve Fleming, from Sam Rayburn High School, Vanessa Reyes, from Memorial High School, Jeremy Richardson, from Pasadena High School, Joseph Adra, and from Parkview Intermediate, Christina Serna. Before we dismiss this group to go to the lobby for pictures, I would like to invite Heidi Reo from the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department to present a special award to Mr. Lloyd Love.
On behalf of Texas Parks and Wildlife Hunter Education Program, I am proud to recognize Coach Love, who was selected as the Professional Educator of the Year for Texas Parks and Wildlife for his nine years and counting continued service reaching our young people through hunting, shooting, sports, and archery. We're honored to have him here in Texas.
Congratulations, Coach Love, and students. And Coach, thank you for the impact you're making on these students. Board members and Dr. Powell, thank you again for allowing us to recognize these students and for your continued support of career and technical education.
Well, I told you it was going to be a great night of recognition, and we limited it, but these are some of our all-stars, so very, very proud of them.
You done lucked too good, Kitty.
That's it.
I'm the rookie.
You done electricity, right?
Well, congratulations to all the students. That's usually the best part of our evening there.
It's pretty exciting.
So, we've got his whole family here.
Okay, item number four, public comments, we don't have any this evening. Item number five, swearing-in of our newly-elected or re-elected board members.
Thank you, Madam President. If you three would stand, I'll come over to you.
Well, I'm getting out of the picture, how about that?
Oh, I didn't everybody came for that.
Dr. Sal, will you make sure the photographer comes and takes a picture of this Jade or whoever's here, just real quick? Y'all want to go down there? There'll be a picture. Do you want to be behind the table, or you want to go? Okay, as long as you're happy.
Whatever.
Okay.
You're always in the picture.
Are you ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
We just want to get a picture and video.
You will raise your right hand, please, and after I read it off, in the name and by the authority of the State of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas.
Aye.
I am Vicki Morgan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
As a board of trustee.
As a board of trustee.
Of Pasadena Independent School District.
Of Pasadena Independent School District.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Great wishes. Thank you.
Now they have to sign to make it official.
This is that invisible ink, right?
That brings us to section three, item number one, consent agenda.
Madam President, I move we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section number four, Personnel Section, item number one, consideration and possible approval of the administrative personnel.
Sorry, it got cracked up. Madam President, I move that we approve addenda pages A through E.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. All in favor? I'm sorry, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to introduce these. Angelica Maria Cruz. Angelica, are you here? Hi, Angelica. Angelica has been named Licensed Specialist in School Psychology. We congratulate you in your new position. You have family with you? No family with you. You're surrounded by family. Next, Megan Elizabeth Johnson. Megan, hey, Megan. Megan has been named Licensed Specialist in School Psychology. We certainly congratulate you.
Thank you.
And I know you have family with you.
I do have family.
Please introduce them to us.
I have my grandmother, Peggy Overholt, who taught Pasadena for 29 years. And I have my mom, who's a current principal, and has been with the district 35 years.
Next, Brittany Nicole Bates. Hi, Brittany. Brittany has been named Behavior Response Team Specialist. Congratulations. Did you bring family with you?
I did not, but my new supervisor did.
Next is the Young Elementary School Principal, and I'll keep you in suspense. No. It is Amy McClellan. You got some big shoes to fill, girl.
I made my own today.
Good. Congratulations. Did you bring family with you?
I did. I brought my parents, Joe and Charlotte, my dad, Ruth, my best friend from my school, Amy, my sister Bailey, and then my partner in crime, my husband, Tim, and then my young family is here, and I have my G A family here.
And I'm sure that Ms. Ross is just a phone call away.
Vic, is that a principal's job, a 50-year position?
That's what we hear.
Oh, happy belated birthday, by the way.
It was a great birthday.
50 more years.
Next, we're gonna be naming the Associate Superintendent for Campus Development, and drum roll, please. It's Mr. Joseph Adra. We're excited for you, Joe. Will you please introduce your family?
I will. I'll be honored. First of all, thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm excited and look forward to it. And so, yes, my family. I have my wife Stephanie. She used to work in the district. And I have my daughter Katie. She's a junior in high school. Down there, I have Christopher. He's a sixth grader. And at the very end, I have Owen. He's my kindergartner. He works right out pretty. I'm a momless boy, so as soon as my mom found out this was happening, my mom drove in from Dallas.
Good, good.
Good for y'all.
Good.
I have my in-laws right here as well, so I have Rain and Walter Wilson. I have my mentor out over here behind me, Steve Fullen. So, thank you, sir. And I have the mighty evil nation right here. Several amazing leaders here at Pasadena High School that...
Are they talking to me anymore? Are they talking to me anymore? We'll see.
I have Jason Chris House, Steve Martin, Leslie Constance, Jennifer Silver. I have Vado Plaid over there. I have Erica Nations. My new head coach, our coach. I have Norris Ali, a longtime friend, and Edith Vavera, longtime friend. She's the secretary there at Pasadena High School. And there's probably a couple other folks that were out there, too.
We're so excited for each of you, and you have some big shoes to fill, too.
Yeah.
Literally and figuratively.
Joe, did they tell you there's nothing but women over there?
It's fun. It's a blessing.
Make sure we've got that recorded, or we can play it back in six months.
Yes, I'm ready.
We've heard all about the hormone surges, so. We've got a great team. Great team.
It's not a tough job, but Fullen's moving out of town in the woods.
Ladies, he's joking. They're all... Well, Joe, this will be the last time that you get to leave a board meeting early, but enjoy your family time.
Does anybody wanna stay?
And that's the most fun we'll have all night.
Oh, sure.
That was his actually first direction he gave in his position. He cleared the room before I did.
Didn't give you the opportunity to do it.
It's all good. Okay. Item number two, consideration and possible approval of the amendment to superintendent's contract and related actions.
Madam President, I move that the board approve the amendment to the superintendent's contract as discussed in executive session.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, Certified Personnel 2019 to 2020 is for informational purposes only. Item number four, Support Personnel 2018 through 2019 is for informational purposes only. Section five, Educational Section, item number one, consideration and possible approval of the 2019-2020 agreement between Avondale House and Pasadena Independent School District for Educational Services and Tuition of 10 Special Education Students.
So move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, consideration and possible approval of the 2019-20 Memorandum of Agreement with the University of Houston Clear Lake for two BCBA Board Certified Behavior Analysts Graduate Assistance.
So move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, consideration and possible approval of the 2019-20 Memorandum of Understanding between the Pasadena Independent School District and the Harris County Juvenile Board.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four is being pulled at this time. Item number five, consideration and possible approval of the Memorandum of Understanding between the Pasadena Independent School District and the City of Houston for the Digital Sandbox.
So move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, consideration and possible approval of the application for TEA Low Attendance Waivers for Pasadena ISD Campuses, which was March 18, 2019.
So move.
Second.
And there was one on March 25th for Tegler at the bottom, so there was...
Oh, I'm sorry.
The majority of the 18th, like you stated.
March 20th, you said?
Uh, March 18th. All of them except for the last one, Tegler Career Center. That day we came back, they still had a low attendance day.
I have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, consideration and possible approval of the application for TEA Miss School Day waiver for South Houston High School.
So move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, consideration and possible approval of the application for a TEA Low Attendance Waiver for Thompson Intermediate.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, consideration and possible approval of the application for a TEA Miss School Day waiver for Pasadena ISD.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion?
I think this is the most we've ever had.
Well, we had... Yes, Ms. Burt, say what you mean. Mean what you say.
I think she's had a lot of work.
Yes, she's had. We've had some, as you know, chemical fires and a little tornado that zipped through town and terroristic threat on the internet, and we had some flooding, you know, so we're praying for no plague or...
Absolutely.
Locusts or anything of that nature.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, consideration and possible approval for the Sam Rayburn High School Texan Battalion Army JRRTC Leadership Team to travel to Washington DC June 21st to 25th, 2019 to compete in the Joint Leadership and Academic Bowl JLAB Championships.
So move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion?
It's not Texan, it's...
I know, I'm sorry. Texan.
I know.
Sorry.
No problem.
I'm sorry. I'll reread it. Consideration and possible approval for the Sam Rayburn High School Texan Battalion Army JRRTC Leadership Team to travel to Washington DC June 21st to 25th, 2019 to compete in the Joint Leadership and Academic Bowl JLAB Championships. There we go. I redeemed myself. I have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section six, Student Achievements. That covered 7th and 8th grade regional academic pentathlon results. Intermediate students recognized by Duke University Talent Identification Program and regional octathlon results for Dobie 9. Section seven, Policy Review. We had none at this meeting. Section eight, Financial Section. Item number one, consideration and possible approval of the budget amendments for April.
Move that we approve the budget amendments.
I have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, consideration and possible approval of the interlocal contract and resolution with Educational Service Center Region 14 National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, consideration and possible approval of the dietetic internship between the University of Houston Health and Human Performance Department and Pasadena ISD Child Nutrition Department.
So move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, consideration and possible approval of the Board Resolution Regarding Declaration of Emergency Employee Compensation and Purchases Due to Inclement Weather on May 10, 2019.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section nine, Operations Section, item number one, consideration and possible approval of the Final Change Order Number One for the Roof Replacement Package Two Project.
So move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, consideration and possible approval of the transfer of the 2014 Bond Program Unused Project Funds to the Bond Contingency Pool.
So move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, consideration and possible approval of the continuation of priority facility upgrade projects and funding by the 2011 Bond Contingency Pool.
So move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, consideration and possible approval for the sale of a 5x30 pad site easement expansion to Harris County located on the east property line of the McMasters Elementary School site.
So move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section 10, Construction Update. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Comment? I promised to Ms. Gonzalez today that I would mention the air conditioning at Williams if somebody from the construction department...
Steve is taking notes as we speak. We talked about Frazier today, but Mr. Roberts had a concern from a Williams.
I didn't have a concern. I'm not the one bringing up...
No, from, from a parent or a community member.
I didn't know anything about it.
About the air conditioning?
Will you check with Tom?
Apparently it's been going on for a few days. Yeah, I'd appreciate it, 'cause Ms. Gonzalez calls me back, I'll be able to say, "I gave it to the superintendent," and I'll give her...
We're on it.
I'll give her your number.
Sounds good. We're on it.
Anything else?
I'll just say it's that time of year where our ACs tend to act up.
We're hard.
And it's not even that hot yet.
Not yet.
Section 11, Miscellaneous Section, item number one, Communications. None additional at this time. Item number two, Public Comments. None additional at this time. And item number three, we will now go back into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee, or to deliberate the reassignment and duties of a public officer. We will then come back to reconvene and open and reorganize the board. So we will reconvene shortly. Thank you. Thank you.
That's funny. Now, they're for here. Oh, come on.
In case you get hot. Or you gotta bring it back.
Somebody had one of those.
That's fresh out.
That's funny.
That's cheaper than air conditioning.
Well, I thought you'd call that parents and give her. No, kidding.
Ms. Gonzalez?
I have the answer though, before you leave, but we need a whole new chilling.
Yeah.
We got our best air conditioner over there.
What's that going at every day?
Every department. Like Rhonda said, like these street customers won't be cool, and they'll get those online, and then the office will go out.
Look, we got them all wrapped around us.
Not to take home. She said not to take home.
Do they wear capris?
So they're gonna take care of them?
I think they're not free.
You gonna give Ms. Gonzalez your phone number?
Sure.
Cell number.
Give them all three of them.
Low bid, y'all. That's what you get.
We reconvene at 8:15. And I will now take nominations for Board President.
Madam President, I move that Marshall Kendrick be Board President.
I need to write first.
You want.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion?
Further nominations.
Any further nominations?
Uh, who is that? Vice President?
No, not yet. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, Freddie, Freddie.
Motion carries. I will now take nominations for Board Vice President.
I'm gonna need Jack Bailey.
I have a nomination for Jack Bailey. Any further nominations? Do I have a second?
I don't have to second it.
I have a motion by Mr. Kendrick, a second by Mrs. Morgan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I will now take nominations for Board Secretary.
Oh, Fernandez over there.
Second.
I have a nomination for Kenny Fernandez. Do I have any further nominations?
Fernandez over there.
I have a motion by Mr. Roberts. And I have a second by Mr. Bailey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll now take nominations for Board Assistant Secretary.
Vicky Morgan?
Second.
Do I have any additional nominations? Marshall made the first. And did you make the second?
Jack.
Everybody's trying to get out of here, apparently. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Kendrick, a second by Mr. Bailey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So I have Board President, Mr. Marshall Kendrick; Board Vice President, Mr. Jack Bailey; Board Secretary, Mr. Kenny Fernandez; and Board Assistant Secretary, Mrs. Vicky Morgan. Congratulations to all of you. And that brings us to Item Number 6. The suggested date for the next regular board meeting is Tuesday, June 25, 2019.
I move that June 25, 2019 be the next regular board meeting.
They still say no special session, so if that's true, we'll.
No only.
We'll be ready to roll.
There you go.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.